Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of July 18th, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. What a joy it is to see a room filled with energy. I see, I can feel the energy of our young people here, and we have a very special meeting today. Do we have any students? No, it's break time, so we don't have people who are here as a part of their required assignment. But students, anytime you would like to come back and observe a student, a city council meeting, we welcome you. And Boy Scout troops are here all of the time, so it's always a joy to have our students and our youth participate in the civic process. At this time, Pastor Kevin Edwards, who's a senior pastor of Rising Star Baptist Church, is going to lead us in the invocation. Pastor Edwards belongs to a church, he leads a church actually, that's very, very active in our community, fantastic leader, and he's also very active in the state organization, but has contributed a lot to our community. And then, following the invocation, we have the pleasure of Alyssa Carlson-Schwarz, who is the Chief Meteorologist at KGET, but she has a new title, and recently she was crowned Mrs. California. So in all of California, all the cities there, we have the pleasure of having someone from Bakersfield representing us. She has earned all kinds of awards in her current role, but we're excited as she moves on to Nationals, and she's going to compete for the Mrs. America pageant in Las Vegas during the month of August. So we wish you all the best. So at this time, Pastor Edwards, would you please come, and everyone stand, please.
Thank you, Mayor Karen Go, and to all of the city officials for this great opportunity for me to come and to do the invocation this evening. Heavenly Father, known by many names and by all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of the community, and Spirit of justice, we ask your blessing upon the people who are, have been called to lead this community in which we live and work and pray. Father God, remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in those noisy political debates, that they are not leaders, but also servants. That is their responsibility, and ours to serve a common good for all. Remind them, Father, that no matter where we live, everyone, the gay, the straight, the transgenders, black, white, Hispanic, the Asians, the Muslims, the Jews, the Hindus, the Sikhs, the atheists, is all neighbors. Remind them, Father, of our siblings, and throughout the ages that have been called, you all have been called as leaders of the people, to respect and to protect the least of those among us, which is our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, and spirit, the strangers, the immigrants, our miss, those who live on margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, and good, and true. And may they, and may they and we speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen. And may they and we all be guided by the Spirit of this community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And now, Mrs. California, to lead us in saluting our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and you may be seated. Alyssa, we wish you all the best as you go on to Nationals, and we are so proud that you are representing our wonderful community at such a high level. So thank you so much, Pastor. Thank you also for your role here. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. In keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. We'd ask you to be courteous in the use of your cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed at other times. And for safety reasons, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. We thank you so much for your cooperation in making this meeting run smoothly. And now, Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Under Presentations, we have certificates of appreciation honoring the Kern High School District's 2018 First in Class Students in the greater Bakersfield area.
It is an honor for me to be before young people who are our leaders today and will go on to be future leaders. All of you are at the very top of your class, and before us, we have students who, on the average, over 90% of all of these First in Class winners have earned the highest possible GPA of 4.5. And some of them, if we could allow it to go on higher, they really have earned higher than that. 4.5 is the average GPA here. Congratulations. You have worked hard, not only academically, but I know that many of you have been involved in community service, and you are going on now to represent our great community in higher education, and we expect to see you back. As we were talking about in the caucus chambers, we want to see you come back and bring your talents and that wonderful brain back to our community. And today, we have 40 of 86 students here today, and I will be going down there along with Councilmember Jackie Sullivan. And at this point, I want to invite Councilmember Sullivan to say a few words. Councilmember Sullivan was the council member who actually came up with the concept of honoring First in Class, and would you please say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is quite a sight, and this is always just such an honor and a pleasure for all of us to welcome you to our City Hall where we do the people's business. It is a privilege to serve our city, and I, the pastor mentioned, leaders, yes, but also its service, its public service. So city government is the level closest to the people, and so it has been my pleasure. We all are honored to be part of this, this wonderful body. We work well together. We, we are responsible for our own opinions and our own votes, but we do respect one another, and we make the very best decisions possible. We appreciate our staff. But students, you're wonderful, you're beautiful. And also, I want to commend the families and the parents. How blessed students are when they have good family support. And obviously, you do, you do. So this is a very special meeting, and special honor for all of us, and we're going to be giving you your certificate. Karen is, is realizing, we love this meeting. So congratulations, welcome, and congratulations.
So at this time, Councilmember Sullivan and I will be coming down there, and we'll just have you come up in the order in which you're called. So you'll just come along this way, and City Clerk?
Hunter Ogilvy.
Okay, just one little minute, so. No, that's Alyssa's. All right, Tru.
Tru, I think you may have just walked out of the room. It was taken care of.
Tru is right here. Okay, we're going to get yours to, so here, we'll give her one so we can do the photo, and then you're going to give it back. Where's the photo? Right here, right there. All right, congratulations, Tru. This one is Abneet. So we need Patrick's at this point. We're close. Did you see how city government works so smoothly? There's never a mistake. Patrick, congratulations. You know what? You all are such perfectionists, it's okay to mess up if you're giving something, right? Because I know that you're all going in, you're at the very top of your class, you can never make a mistake, but it's okay.
Amon Manan. The parents of Carla Guzman.
Carla has gone on already to the U.S. Naval Academy, so receiving from her, on her behalf, will be Mom. Congratulations.
Aubrey Williams. Parents of Charlotte Wen.
Brittany, here we go. Congratulations, Brittany. And Mom? Congratulations.
Isabella Ku.
Harvard man? Congratulations.
Nicole Bonner.
Couldn't have heard anyone else. Congratulations. Let's take a photo with you since we messed up so bad. So you will all stand face front, and then hold this in front of you. Just make sure that you can be seen, and then Councilmember Sullivan, if you just stand on that end, all of you stand up who have received this. And then just move your head so that we all fit. Actually, if you can kind of push in towards the middle, you know, if you're on this side, turn your body a little bit this way, if you're on this side, turn it this way, get closer, either end. All right, here we go. All right.
All right. Okay, can everyone see the lens of this? Everyone, there's a couple people over here that are hiding, maybe, no, anybody over there? All right, here we go. Ready, one, two, three, one, two, three, and one more time, one, two, three. There we go. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, here we go. If you want to know, you can hit on our city council channel, the YouTube channel, and you may play it over and over and over and over, immortalized forever. Thank you so much. We are now going to take a brief recess while you exit. If you choose, if you want to stay here and stay here in the meeting, you're welcome to do that, but if you'd like to leave at this point, you are free to do that. And again, all the best, and let's have lots of letters, but we're going to see you back in Bakersfield in four years, maybe six, after you do your master. I will come back here and it doesn't start with you. Okay, we'll have a brief recess now as we clear the chambers. If you check out my Facebook, this will be on my Facebook. Oh, I see somebody in the back, I should have introduced you earlier. Dr. Lynette Zalesny, who is our new CSUB president, is right there in the turquoise. Go Road Runners! She'll be out there to greet you, and I'll come out there also. I just didn't see you there earlier, doctor. She comes from Fresno State and is joining our team now as our new president. So thank you, we're back in session. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, if you give those to the Clerk, she'll distribute those. We'd ask you to avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested in your concerns and with your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take any action when an item isn't on the agenda. We can, however, refer your matter to committee and request that staff follow up with you. If you're here to speak on hearing items 9A through 9D, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity later in the meeting when that item is called. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Margie Madamba, Regarding Maintenance in Quailwood, Ward 2, and Dog Leash Laws.
Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Margie Madamba. Recently, we lost a beloved legacy of Bakersfield. As a civic icon, Mary Shell served the people while committed to making Bakersfield beautiful. She held herself and others to high accountability. I'm greatly concerned with my neighborhood of Quailwood. Quailwood is a unique community of Ward 2 that has diverse culture of young and old, wonderful schools, caring citizens, and a strong property deed. I am furious that little has been done over the past 11 years to keep my community of Quailwood maintained. I feel as if city code enforcement is not taking my concerns seriously. Please see the prior documentation regarding the rental home of 7005 Quailwood Drive that was to be read at the prior city council meeting. Over the past years, I am highly concerned with the following. Number one, unkempt landscaping, fencing and trees, along with trash in the yards, gutters, parks, and school perimeters. I'm not speaking of a gum wrapper, I'm referring to excessive conditions. Large-rooted trees cause root damage to streets, sidewalks, driveways, foundations, and utility sewer lines. Number three, boats and RVs are parked in residential areas where some are operating with electrical running from the home to the street RV. Number four, rental homes left unlocked between renters posing safety issues to neighboring residents of gangs and squatters. Number five, residential garages being used as auto mechanic shops. Number six, original 40-year-old shake roofs for potential fire hazards. And number seven, over the past year, I've called City Animal Control, reporting dogs off-leash. Some of these dogs were reported two to three times. My 11-year-old dog was recently attacked by a German Shepherd four times his size. Had it not been for our cattle prod, he would have perished. Later, I found out only one tag number reported this dog when other residents spoke of other attacks. After visiting the police department last week, I discovered that many of my off-leash phone calls did not even result in a tag number. Present citations of city code, property deed, and animal control off-leash violations are obviously not working. These need to be changed. I will not sit back and watch my neighborhood be swallowed to yet another Bakersfield slum. What will this city council do to keep my neighborhood held to high accountability maintenance under my property deed and city codes? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madamba. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor Go. Ms. Madamba, thank you very much for coming and visiting us, and thank you for reaching out to me prior to coming to council and having a conversation. And Mr. Tandy, if someone from your office would reach out to Ms. Madamba, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Bishop James Francisco, Regarding a Streetlight.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Bishop James Francisco. I am the founder and the pastor of the Way Christian Ministry. It accounted an honor and a privilege to be before Bakersfield City Council, a city that I have been born and raised in, that I've always worked in the backgrounds of the city, and I'm coming forth because I was inspired as a minister, always looking for places in our city that we can develop or give spiritual guidance, and just building our city. I was inspired to go on the corner of Athan Union, and I was saying, "Lord, I know why you're sending me down, because it's your work." So I went on the corner of Athan Union, and I began to pray there. I began to pray three hours a day. And the third day, the Lord, in my spirit, I felt a release. So the next day, there was an accident, a three-car accident there. Then the following day, there was a two-car accident, and the next day, there was an accident with a pedestrian. So I said, "Okay, Lord, I see that this area of Union, used to be the pride of Bakersfield." I was born on Union, I was born there, 1953, when they had houses there. Our house was, six houses down from the Bakersfield sign. At night, it used to glow up our whole house. As a kid, me and my brother used to sit out on the front porch and look at all the beautiful luxury cars going to the Bakersfield Inn, and I used to say, "That's my car." My brother said, "That's your car." But the area has changed now. It's become an area that, a lot of drugs, a lot of our mentally challenged, and a lot of our homeless has been taking over that area. And I, so I moved to the area. I said, "Lord, you want me in it, so I'm going to move up in there." And I moved in a hotel, and I began to pray on the corner, and I began to let the Spirit reveal to me. And right there on the corner of Athan Union, and I would like to invite the mayor and some of the city council members to come out and, and let me show you and let you see some of the things that are going on. And a lot of people down there are elderly now, you see a lot of wheelchairs, you see a lot of people on walkers, and that intersection right there on Athan Union, it's almost like a cat going across. It's almost like you've got nine lives. It's a four-lane roadway, and you stand on that roadway, I've stood on there myself, and you're waiting for it to go across. Now, one car might stop in the second lane, but when you go out, you've got to stop where that car at, and make sure that another car is not coming fast. And I've seen people get almost hit like that, and almost hit like that, and a lot of people do not like to cross that, that crosswalk, they're rather go to meet, cross in halfway down the block where there's no crosswalk. And I see the future of Bakersfield, and because the dynamics of it has changed, and the people that are coming there have changed, I do believe that we need a light there.
Bishop, your time has expired.
Okay, I just wanted, I wanted to bring that up, and I brought something to explain a little bit further, and I wish that the city council would come out and view that area with me, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bishop. Next speaker, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Oops, I just spilled coffee all over myself. Thank you for coming. I know, is your, is there a phone number in, in the information you left with us? Okay. That's, this- That's, this, that crosswalk is the crosswalk of death. I agree with you, and it's terrifying and scary, and I've actually found myself in the same situation you described earlier where you can't see fully across. So, while I'll take some time to head out and look at it, I'm hoping and looking at our Public Works Director, see if we can look into that as well. I know a streetlight's likely not possible, but perhaps there's a little bit more we can do to highlight the crosswalk itself.
I can provide a little bit more information as well. This intersection is being studied by Caltrans. Union Avenue is a Caltrans facility, and they are looking at a pedestrian signal for that location.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Nathan Banks, Kern County Black Chamber, regarding Midwest Black Rodeo.
Good evening, members of the Council. I just wanted to come out tonight and let you all know and invite you out. This Friday evening at 8:00 PM, we'll be having the Midwest Black Rodeo. This is something that we had back in 2009, was when they were last here, be held at the Kern County Fairgrounds, and I want to present them to the Council so that we can give them a wonderful Bakersfield welcome. They're in from all over the country, so we want to invite everyone out. Again, that's Friday night, 8:00 PM, at the Kern County Fairgrounds.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. I am looking forward to being there. So, put on your boots and let's go out there, and we're going to have a great time. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming to our great city, and we welcome you with open arms and look forward to a wonderful time together. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Lynette Zelesny, from CSUB.
Welcome, Dr. Zelesny. Dr. Zelesny is our new president of our wonderful California State University Bakersfield. She started on July the 1st and has probably already done more in a couple of weeks than many people have done in months. Welcome, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. It's lovely to be here. I'm here to introduce myself to the Council, and I am also here to share with you what a wonderful two weeks it has been. I have had a very warm welcome. I am so delighted to be part of Bakersfield and Kern County, and I look forward to future work, collaborations, and partnerships with you and to this fine city. I feel like this joy of serving as CSUB, as their next president, their fifth president, is a dream. So, thank you again, and thank you for your service, and I look forward to partnering with you in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Zelesny. We're looking forward to that. In my state of the city, I talked about education being so important to economic development, the development of our workforce. And so, we know that Dr. Zelesny is one who focuses on preparing students for the workplace, for success in their life, and we're looking forward to your term in office, and may it be many years, and welcome to our community. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under appointments, we have appointments to the Bakersfield Youth Commission due to the term expiration of all regular and alternate members on July 20th, 2018. Applications for appointment were received from Gonzalo Rocha Vazquez, Tate Turner, who is a current member, Sadie Young, Eric Miranda, Evan Whitlock, Gabriel Kupalong, Jasmine Garza, Maya Lewis Salinas, Riley Dyson, and Genesis Hernandez. A staff memorandum has been received providing clarification on the nomination of applicants by Mayor Go and each Councilmember.
Thank you. So, we have 16 vacancies on the Youth Commission. I'm going to give each Councilmember an opportunity to nominate a candidate as a regular member and as an alternate member to represent his or her ward. Candidates must reside in Bakersfield, but they may be appointed by ward based on the location of their residences or schools. So, Councilmembers, you may nominate a regular member, that's the primary one, an alternate member, or both. And we'll have two separate votes tonight. First, we'll do regular members and then alternate members. So, I'm going to begin with the mayor's nomination, then we will continue in ward order, starting from Ward 1. After all nominations of the regular members have been completed, I'll call for a motion. Then, we'll take nominations for alternate members, followed by a motion. So, now, we'll accept nominations for regular members, and I am pleased to nominate Evan Whitlock, a senior from Frontier High School, as the mayor's regular member. Evan's the Chair of Leaders in Life Executive Committee, and he also is serving statewide as the California Association of Student Council's Secretary Treasurer. So, my nomination for the regular member, mayor's appointee, Evan Whitlock. And Councilmember Rivera, would you like to start with your nomination for your regular appointee?
Yes, I'd like to move the reappointment of Luke Garcia to the Youth Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the reappointment of Tate Turner, a resident of Quellwood, a student at BHS, and a great representative for Ward 2.
He's out there in the audience, and thank you for your service thus far. Councilmember Ware.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Sadie Elena Young. I hope I said that right.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Eric Miranda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Jasmine Garza as the primary member.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes, and I would like to nominate Genesis Hernandez, BHS 10th grader.
Thank you. And Councilmember Parlier?
I am NA.
Okay. So, at this point, Vice Mayor, we have nominations. Would you like to make a motion?
I would move all the names just nominated for approval.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was approved.
Thank you. And now, we'll take nominations for the alternate members. Some of you may not have them at this point, so I am not going to make a nomination right now for an alternate member. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move the nomination of Gonzalo Rocha Vazquez as the alternate member for Ward 1.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I will decline to nominate an alternate tonight.
Councilmember Ware?
Thank you, Mayor. Not at this time. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a nomination.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Maya Lewis Salinas as the alternate.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan?
And I was delighted to have two positions open, and I really enjoyed reading the applications. Both were just outstanding young people. So, my alternate, again from BHS, 9th grader, is Riley Dyson.
Thank you. And Councilmember Parlier?
I do not have a nomination. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? Motion?
I will move the nominations for approval.
You have, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Do we have any of those who have been selected in the audience? Tate, raise your hand, and we welcome you. Thank you for your service. Anyone else who's in the audience with us? All right, well, thank you. We look forward to your ongoing service and appreciate what you've done thus far. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AD for approval. A staff memorandum has been received regarding item 8K, transmitting a revised agreement and Exhibit A.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I've received no request to take anything off the consent agenda, so I will move to approve items 8A through AD.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearings, items 9A through 9D for approval.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of the meeting. At this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearings, items 9A through 9D. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the matter from the consent calendar Seeing none, does any Councilmember wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearing? Seeing none, at this time, consent calendar public hearing items 9A through 9D are now closed. Vice Mayor?
I will move to approve items 9A through D.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under reports, item A, City in the Hills Delinquency Status Report. A staff memorandum has been received updating the total cash balance available and the revised cash delinquency estimate.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Member City Council Nelson Smith, Finance Director. Give us just a moment to get the projector turned on. So, tonight, I'm giving you a delinquency status report on City in the Hills Assessment District 05-1. The district was formed in December 2005. The purpose was to assist with financing and public improvements. Development stalled, and large sections of land remain undeveloped at this point. The Council approved foreclosure actions against some delinquent parcels going back to 2010. We attempted tax sales in 2013 and 2015 with no bidders appearing. The Debt Service Reserve Fund has been drawn upon to make debt payments in 2015, 16, and 17. The current balance of the Debt Service Reserve is just over $246,000. We have a bond payment coming due September 2nd, and we will deplete, fully deplete, the reserve fund at that time. We're also anticipating a cash shortfall of approximately $23,000, which will cause a delay in some bondholders getting paid. This is a map of the Assessment District. It's bordered on the west by Vineland, on the north by Palladino, Masterson on the east, and State Highway 178 on the south. The properties on the bottom-left corner outlined in red have been delinquent. Those are some of the properties we're foreclosed on in 2010, as well as the properties outlined in blue. There are two large parcels in the northeast corner, and then there are 137 individual single-family lots in the central area of the properties. The cash balance in the Redemption Fund, the Redemption Fund is where we deposit annual assessments that are collected on the property tax rolls. So, we have $700,000 in assessments collected for the year. We have a reserve fund balance of $246,000. That gives us total cash available to make the debt service payment, $950,830. The debt payment is $973,970, which leaves a shortfall of approximately $23,000. And so, the bond documents that were created when this district was formed, they outline what happens when you have a shortfall. And there are really two courses of action, and it depends on whether the city determines there will be an ultimate loss to the bondholders. If there's no ultimate loss, then interest payments are made first, and then matured bonds are paid to the extent cash is available. If the city determines an ultimate loss is in place, then all payments are paid on a prorata basis, and the funds are spread proportionately to all the remaining bondholders. Our outside bond council has defined ultimate loss as a determination that the bondholders are likely never to receive full payment of principal and interest, as distinguished from a temporary deficiency that the city believes will eventually be brought current. Some of the recent activity in the area, there are homes currently under construction within the district boundaries. There is a tentative tract map in process to be recorded that overlays the 137 single-family lots that are in foreclosure status. Major road improvements have been made in the area, as has major park improvements. New schools have been constructed. There's also new commercial construction underway on 178. And the county tax collector indicates that many of those delinquent parcels will go to tax sale with the county process in March of 2019. So, based on the recent activity of both commercial and residential information, staff does not believe that there will be an ultimate loss to the bondholders at this time. The county intends to hold a tax sale in March, which may resolve some of the delinquencies. Staff will remit all available funds to the paying agent in September, but some of the bondholders will likely experience the delay in receiving full payment that is due to them until a later date. Just a reminder, the city is under no obligation to use any city funds to make debt service payments on these Assessment Districts. And then, staff will come back in a year from now with a status update. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we're looking for a motion to accept the report and have staff proceed as outlined.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Councilmember Freeman?
Just a couple of questions. You said if someone is processing a map for 137 lots on the property that is delinquent, is that a developer?
It is. Perhaps Ms. Kitchen can explain how that works.
But this developer doesn't own those parcels?
That is correct. The developer processing the map does not currently own the parcels.
Councilmember Freeman, through the mayor, there are a number of maps being processed in this area. I can get you more information on the specific one. I believe the one that's being referenced is kind of a reversion to acreage-type map. Basically, there were some lots that were recorded out there during the boom time, and we do have several maps that we're processing, which are basically converting those back to a larger parcel. The assumption would be that that would be for future sale and re-subdivision at a later time, but I can provide additional information on that after doing some additional research.
Are you processing them? The owner isn't processing them?
It would be property owners. The city doesn't process any maps. It would be whoever owns the property at this.
Is this the original owner who kind of left town and is letting the reserve fund make the payments? I'm just trying to understand, who's processing a map on land? They own the land.
They would have to own the land in order to be the applicant, yes.
And they, but they are not making the bond payments on that land? They're delinquent.
The owner is not making the payments. It was my understanding there was another developer who does not currently own the properties that is processing the tract map, the tentative tract map.
And that may be the case, and if so, whoever is holding it under the foreclosure proceedings would have had to sign off, but I can look into that for you.
That, I mean, what I don't understand is why haven't they made an offer to buy the property and pay off the bonds? Even if it's a low-ball, that's the part I don't understand, is someone spending money to process a map, sounds like they want to own these lots, and they have made an offer to buy them. That's all true.
I would love for them to buy the property, yeah.
If you can get a little more information. Do we know if the original owner, the developer, is still the original owner?
I will get that information for you.
Okay. They're just not around anymore, but, I mean, I guess.
Councilmember Freeman, I believe it went through a default, and then the lender went through default, and it wound up with a second lender, and City in the Hills has a rather unique history, but we can get you the detail.
So, it may be a financial institution that owns these?
The company that owns those parcels is called Regent Land.
Okay. We just, I'm just, you think they're processing this reversion of? Okay, okay, it's not really a developer processing them. Okay, I just wondered if, and no developers have shown interest if there's activity out there? there? Kind of surprised no builder has come in and.
We've had inquiries over the past couple of years. We've had several inquiries to get payoff amounts on the parcels, and so there has been some interest expressed. We've probably done half a dozen calculations over the last two years on, you know, what would it take to cure the delinquencies on these parcels? So there has been some interest, they just haven't pulled the trigger.
Is there more debt besides these payments you referenced? Is there still millions of dollars owed?
Yes, there are still millions of dollars owed.
Oh, you don't know the balance after this $900,000 is made? What the balance of the bonds is?
The balance on the bonds is about $8 or $9 million left of principal.
Oh, well, that.
The bonds run out to the year 2024.
And you think that that will all be recovered?
I think.
Sounds like a lot of money.
At this point in time, there's opportunity for additional development and continued growth in the area.
Yeah, just eight to nine million. Sounds like, well, maybe that's a lot of land. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else? You have a motion?
It's the city attorney, looked like he had some comments. I'd appreciate input.
Good evening, Mayor, through the mayor, Councilmember Smith. Just one of the things is that Regent Land is one of the lenders that inherited these lots. There's 137 lots, and it's my understanding that they're working in conjunction with Kayhov, who is the one that owns lots nearby, the distressed lots in that district, and they're the ones that are processing the map in phases. And so what their intention is to deal with their phases and then start buying those other lots and paying the taxes as they come due. So it's, to my understanding, it's a little bit of a long-term project, but doesn't mean, so it's a possible, that's what's going into motion right now. And then all the other developments that are going on, the commercial activity, and it's all starting to be in a positive way on that. So, and the same thing with the two large lots that were on the left side of that map. They're owned by, they were owned by MVB, but now there's a bank in Kansas that is the lender, and they're stuck with it. In the past, they were even willing to say, hey, city, you can have the land, and we don't want it because we're not, we would then be responsible for those assessments. So that's kind of how these assessments work. And so there's a good amount of taxes that are still on these properties that haven't paid, and so the assessments, you have to pay the taxes along with the assessments that get paid. And so we went to court and got liens on the two large parcels down there, and also on the Regent Land properties. It's collecting interest, and then the rest of the taxes since 2015 are then just left on the tax rolls. So if the county then proceeds in March with some tax sales on the 137 lots, then that might bring some revenue back in. It might push parties to deal with the situation and pay up. So right now, we're acting as trustee, collecting the money, and then giving them to the underwriters, you know, to the bondholders. So we've been working with this every year, or at least the past few years that I've been doing this particular part of my job. We've come to council, and we've had those lists of property owners. Like today, there was about five property owners in the district to give us permission to file a judicial foreclosure action. You've approved that as part of your consent calendar. So we've been doing that on smaller homeowners, and a few have maybe 20 or 30 lots in there. But it's that number shrinking down in terms of those types of delinquencies. It's now evolved to where it's just mainly those two big, large property owners.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the background.
Sure.
I will make the motion to accept the report.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just want to thank the City Manager's Office, Police Department, Code Enforcement, Solid Ways Roads, and General Services for the recent annexation of the Denon neighborhood. Just a wonderful plan that the city put together, all the outreach efforts. It took a little while to bring it in, but I think it was just a wonderful plan, and I want to thank everyone involved, including the volunteers. Also, for Kern Economic Development Corporation. It's been a while since Richard has been in front of the council, and as a representative of the KEDC, I'd like to have them to come back, give us an update about our partnership, and see what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? I'd like to welcome Chief Galleguez. This is your first council meeting as chief, and welcome, and congratulations. We're looking forward to working with you. And then thank you to all of you who worked together for the Fourth of July Community Celebration at Spectrum. It was a wonderful celebration. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, for your leadership there, but a great time was had by all of the community. So seeing that there are no further requests for comments, we stand adjourned at 6:17.